That prayer today is, Heavenly Father, we should follow Christ in a way of compassion and understanding, even though, from my human viewpoint, there may be much I find difficult to understand. Christ in me gives me spiritual insight that enables me to see beyond what seems to be and to keep faith in the goodness at the heart of it all. Amen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a quick admin note for everyone. We've removed the mic in the front, so the only way that you can be heard online is if you're in front of a microphone. So please know that as we begin today. On August 15th, I approved for the Department on Aging an unpaid leave of absence for Mindy Hudek, an Information and Referral Assistant for up to 80 hours during the period of August 4th, 2025 through August 15th, 2025, for time not covered by a curate, sick, and vacation leave. Also, on August 15th, I approve for Maintenance the hiring of Elizabeth Rubino to the position of Contract Coordinator #1924, to be effective September 2nd, 2025, at the rate of $24.74 per hour. This is Grade 11 Step 1 with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. I also approved an unpaid medical leave of absence for David Alexander, Custodian #1906, for 16.21 hours during the period of July 30th, 2025 through August 1st, 2025, for time not covered by a curate, sick, and vacation leave. On August 18th, I approved for Maintenance an unpaid medical leave of absence for Joan Stately, part-time General Communications Clerk/Switchboard Operator #1912-1, for the period August 4th, 2025 through August 22nd, 2025, for time not covered by a curate, sick, and vacation leave. And finally, on August 18th, I concurred with the Bainbridge Township Trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license being requested by Hive on Honey Hill LLC, located at 8200 East Washington Street, Chagrin Falls, Ohio. OCTNEW 03874672-1. And that is all. Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioners' Office. Today's financials include then-and-now encumbrances from the Commissioners to the Treasurer State of Ohio for BCMH treatments from November of 2024 and from Common Police Court for new leaf program services from April through June of 2025 that were not previously encumbered. There's also a travel encumbrance from Job and Family Services to attend the 2025 Ohio Public Children's Services Agency's Organization Annual Conference. Among the vouchers is one for $226,129.11 from Water Resources to Agro Sludge Incorporated for the Aquila Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Project, which has fully expended the funds from ARPA that had been set aside for it.
I move to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And before I go, Adrian, I just wanted to let Mr. DeVore know that we went before the Budget Commission yesterday. Adrian, Amy, and I were there, and Adrian did an excellent job. I thought he represented the Commissioners very well, so I wanted to let you know that.
Appreciate having Amy there and you, and it went well, so.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. My pleasure.
Item number three.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chuck Walder, Geogu County Auditor's Office. I don't know how to follow the dog that came earlier, but I will. I'll do my best to... I'm just grateful ADP doesn't have Smell-O-Vision. So after being contacted by a resident, I was able to watch last week's session, and I observed a rather clandestine exchange between Maintenance and the Board of County Commissioners that I wanted to address. I'm not exactly sure what all the cloak and dagger was about in that exchange with Maintenance, but I want to clarify that I had raised a request of Maintenance at a Board of Elections meeting, in a public meeting. It was not something that I pulled Glenn aside or Maintenance aside and said, "Hey, let's move the building, huh?" So, kind of giving you the backstory. For almost four years, I, either virtually or in person, or a representative of mine, have attended Board of Election meetings. And we have invested, as a group significantly, in an attempt to move the mission down the field to have Board of Elections join the Commissioners in this facility. And I'm happy that we accomplished that mission, but that came with a lot of investment. In the process of doing that, it was very clear at the onset of my meetings with the Board of Elections that they had some significant concerns about parking, especially during gubernatorial and presidential elections. And, I mean, in those meetings, I know, Commissioner Brackey, you attended a few of them since you've become a Commissioner, and I think we walked out one meeting and you said, "You know, everything they're asking for isn't unreasonable." And I think we all kind of went, "Yeah, parking is an issue."
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's definitely my big concern, particularly for next year.
Yeah. And, you know, to the Board of Elections' credit, they have been persistent in that messaging. They've not been private about it. They've not kept it in confidence. They have been direct, and I personally appreciate their directness. It's hard to help somebody when you don't know what it is they want you to do. So, in that meeting, in one of the meetings, maybe a couple of months ago now, I mentioned to Glenn in the public meeting during discussion, "Has anyone considered, with the announcement of the new facility going in across the street, perhaps locating their parking space in a manner which we could also benefit from for overflow parking during these election cycles?"
Yeah.
That was the spirit of the conversation. It was not, "Let's move the building 300 feet X or Y direction." It was, "Let's open our minds up to opportunities before we have to spend additional tax money to build more parking spaces." I know we suffer from a lot of storage constraints with county vehicles being stored on the premise.
Yeah.
And that's prime location, especially during an election cycle. A remote site would be a very small inconvenience to be able to house, you know, those kind of vehicles and equipment on a temporary basis during those windows of opportunity. So that was the intent of my inquiry. It was certainly not to undermine the authority of this board. But I understand if the temperature is not ripe for the Board to consider that because they've already determined a different pattern, I get it. It's, I have no dog in this fight, other than to try to address concerns that have repeatedly been brought to the attention of all of us that I think will affect us when, one way or another, come time for an election, which is just around the corner.
Yeah, no, I think that's... I didn't quite understand what the request was last week, obviously, if that wasn't clear. Because there's four lots essentially across the street, and your suggestion, correct, is to use the lot we're already using for the youth center and just make sure that parking is perhaps convenient to this building, and perhaps we expand it beyond what you would typically need for the youth center to accommodate overflow parking, maybe long-term parking of some of those vehicles. I think that's a solution that makes sense. I mean, for me, I don't think it's an either-or. Either do we expand the parking, like, the contiguous parking at this building, or do we expand the parking at the youth center? I mean, I think it's like, take everything on the menu, right? I think we're going to need all of that parking, particularly for the next-
I agree.
-presidential cycle. So, and I mean, I don't know when we're breaking ground on the youth center, but I think we got, it's not going to be done. That parking wouldn't be done for the gubernatorial election.
I agree. My worry, though, is, if history were to repeat itself, we sometimes get in a pattern of considering options after buildings are constructed.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
And I'm just saying, this is an opportunity for us all to kind of think again about it, and if we can restructure that parking a little bit to accommodate it, then why not?
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's going to never be cheaper than it is right now.
No, that's right. And it's, I mean, it's a lot cheaper to build the parking lot bigger now than it is to do that in two years or five years. I mean, not even just the cost of inflation and labor and so forth, but just, you know, it's more efficient to build it bigger from the onset, so.
I just didn't want the delivery of the message to you to overshadow the intent of the message.
Yeah.
So that's why I felt important to be here.
Well, I appreciate you coming out and clarifying that. I mean, I think, you know, just, I say responsibility for health, someone that went down last week, and I think we, as Commissioners, can do a better job at times, perhaps, weeding out the substance of what gets on the agenda. I think Christie does a very good job, like, being that gatekeeper for the procedure of what gets on the agenda. And, you know, obviously, Amy and I are newer here, and we're trying to figure some of that stuff out. So I think that's something that we can do better in the future to make sure that issues are ripe when they come before us and that we know the facts, kind of, we're not surprised.
I appreciate it. And boy, I know Board of Elections is here, so if you have questions about the intent, I mean, I'm not using them as my backup. I use the dog for that, which didn't go as planned, by the way. I mentioned to the Dog Warden, geez, you know, everybody should bring a dog. And then after the event, well, maybe everyone shouldn't bring a dog.
Backpedal that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll revisit that later. So I appreciate the time. I'm going to scoop back to Budget Commission meetings if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming in, Chuck. I appreciate it.
We will make accommodations during the voting period.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a big, going to be a big conversation. But if anyone from the Board of Elections, ladies, gentlemen, want to say anything-
No, we thank Chuck. We thank him for everything he's done for us. We really appreciate what his office has done.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. We counted the spots.
Do you want to come up to the microphone, just so we can hear you online?
Absolutely. Based off the required-
State your name.
Dennis Devola from the Geogu County Board of Elections. Based off the required number of spots or the map of the spots that you currently have, there's less than 80 public parking spots. The rest are allocated to employee parking or the staff cars, the county cars. And based off that, and that's 80 spots for the whole building.
Yeah, right.
You know, that isn't going to be sufficient during, you know, that 30-day period.
No, I agree.
Particularly in the gubernatorial and the presidential. I mean, and you know better than anybody because you were out there-
Yeah.
-at the last election-
Yeah.
-on the correct side of the flags.
Thanks for pointing that out on the record. I put that in the notes for Steve.
But, you know, you saw how many people and what kind of lines and what kind of parking was required.
No, I mean, how long were people waiting on the weekend for early voting?
An hour, 15.
I think it was more than that even at times. I mean, I remember one-
Pretty much went in an hour, hour 15.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's a long time, and a long time to have parking. I mean, that's not people parking for 15 minutes-
Right.
-and then leaving. I mean, have you, do you have a sense, like, how many parking spots were you using at 470 during early voting?
Well, if you, even if you use the lower number of 400-
Yeah.
-over 10 hours, that's 40.
Yeah.
You know? But, you know, that's not those last two weeks. That's not what the number is.
Right, right.
It's 700 to 1,000.
Okay.
You know? And that's based off of what's happened previously. And the county is somewhat expanding, especially with what's going on in Bainbridge, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And there's going to be, you know, and we've steadily moved. When I came on the Board, I believe we had 65,000 registered voters. We now have 69, just shy of 69. And I would expect that to go over 70 with what's happening in both Charten and Bainbridge.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I think that's a conversation we're just going to have to keep having about the needs for the parking.
No, I really do feel that it's important that we have the extra parking, especially if you're going to do that project with the community center and, you know, make that part of it.
Yeah, I mean, and some of that, you know, maybe, you know, those long-term parking, you know, for county vehicles just need to be moved somewhere else, or we shuttle in employees. I mean, we're, you know, I think there's, like I said, it's kind of an all-of-the-above solution of how we're going to manage this.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, we'll make accommodations.
I appreciate the-
But luckily, we have a bit of a, like, soft, a soft opening, in a way, with the election in November.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like a restaurant, soft opening.
It's not going to be quite the same jarring effect of starting out with a presidential at this location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Good morning.
How are you? Elaine Malkamaki, Community Economic Development. I have two items on the agenda this morning. The first one is Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to electronically execute and submit the Ohio Department of Development First Amendment to the Grant Agreement, Brownfield Remediation, to extend the date of expiration through December 31st of 2025. That's for 7145 Pine. Since we got such a late start on it, we're probably going to do this one and maybe at least an additional one through June of next year and possibly one after that.
Okay.
So it's going to be a little bit of a process, but this is just our first.
When was the, when was the original expiration on this?
June 31st.
Okay.
June 30th.
And now, I mean, my other question I wrote down was, "Are we confident we'll get it in by the end of the year?" And it sounds like, "No, not at all."
No.
But this is kind of the process, is we get a little bit, and then we ask for more, and then-
The Ohio Department of Development is great to work with. They want to see the projects completed, so they never, like, do a cutoff date.
Yeah, yeah.
They will do grant extensions so that we can finish this.
Okay, that's great.
It was supposed to be a year, and I don't know what happened. Everything went electronically, and then they started doing six months. So we'll just do another one again in the fall, you know, like, towards December, and try to get that done, too, so.
Have they started anything on this?
They have.
Okay.
They are starting with the asbestos removal on some of the buildings. They are delineating some of the wetlands also, so.
Very good. I'll make a motion to approve item number four.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
All right. And the second item on the agenda, number five, is Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute the three-party contract between the Geogu County Board of Commissioners, Family and Community Services Incorporated, Doing Businesses, Chagrin Falls Park Community Center, Access Family Services Incorporated, and Gold Star Roofing LLC for the Pavilion Roof Replacement and the Community Center Siding Replacement at the Chagrin Falls Park Community Center under the Community Development Block Grant BF23-1AZ-1 for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
And this is because we had the money left over?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so we expanded the scope.
So we're going to do their Pavilion Roof. They'll get a brand-new roof for that, and then they will get all-new siding on their building also.
Okay.
So in addition to the roof that they asked for.
All right, that's great.
So that was great, I know.
Yeah, that's like, that's a good bang for your buck.
I mean, and this one's going to be done pretty quick, too, because the grant ends real soon, so we're working on getting all of this done, so.
Okay, exciting.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine.
So, Elaine. Item number six. The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the certification request to County Auditor, request to Board of Commissioners Quarterly Use of County Credit Cards pursuant to ORC 301.27 for the year 2025 Quarter III for the Dog Warden Geogu Credit Union Visa.
I move to approve.
Second.
It's in the order, because he's here. Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
In case you have questions.
Should you have been item number two?
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Everyone asks what I do for my job, and that's what I do. Pick up a mess of them.
Do we have a good boy or no?
Yes, he is actually a good boy. I was going to say he's housebroken, but I am not 100% sure.
The jury's still out.
At this point, he's a situation, his name is Tiramisu. And we actually picked him up from Asha Bula County Animal Protectively, because we've been doing so well on adoptions. They picked up him and three others in a hoarding case. They probably had, like, 10 or 15 in the hoarding case. So he's just not been, had a good life yet so far. So he's starting to learn how to go to a bathroom.
See if I can get a picture of you guys for the Facebook page.
Hopefully outside.
Look at me, Tiramisu, smile.
But, yeah, he's one of the many that we have here, and hence the reason we're coming in here today. He's six years old, so he is a little older, but small dogs like this can go about 12 to 15 years, so. And he just needs some attention and love, so hopefully someone can see him and like him. He's a lapdog, so he definitely enjoys it and all that. So I didn't bring my thing here, so I, do I got to read it, or can I just?
I'll read it for you. It's like, I should read one down there, right? What's happened?
We'll find another one.
I have item number seven. The Dog Warden is requesting the Board approve a temporary reduction in adoption fees for dogs to half-price effective August 19th, 2025, through the end of August 2025. $100 for unfixed dogs and puppies, normally 200, and $60 for all other dogs, normally 120, in conjunction with the Clear the Shelter National Event, sponsored by Channel 3 and other affiliates across the country.
So Channel 3, are they, they give you the money, then, for the delta between the normal fee and the reduced fee? Is that how this works?
No, they, so we did this, I think, about eight years ago. It's just an event to, Channel 3 just does it to advertise. We'll actually be on, we'll have a dog featured on their station on Sunday this week, I think 9:00 AM. So we'll have a dog, and we'll have our shelter featured on there. We're just doing the reduction of fees, and then we're just, it doesn't matter on the fees. It's just to help the, get the dogs out of the shelter and all that for the end of the month or this event.
Bless you, Tiramisu.
Other shelters are doing it, but a dog like this at half-price might hopefully entice someone to really want to take a chance on it, so.
Although, I did think about this. I mean, I've always, I'm a lifelong dog owner and cat owner, and it's not the initial cost of buying the animal or adopting a animal. The issue is the food and the vet bills and those extended costs, but I'm sure folks realize that when they're stepping foot in the shelter.
A lot of it, and with our dogs, though, when you get a rabies test, you get all the shots, and he's fixed already, so all that is included in the fee.
Okay.
So half your price, yes. I mean, nowadays, dogs' prices are that. But once you get into a home, as I always say, is, would you want to pay a couple thousand dollars for a dog that greets you at the thing and puts smiles on people's faces in the audience?
Well, it wasn't smiles all today, but.
Exactly. Even though he made a mess in there, you can't argue with him that. It's his fault, and he's had a tough life, and he's going to get a new home, into a good home.
Very good.
So that's really what it comes down to, is what we can do for the animals.
Well, that's a really good deal for the residents and, you know, half-price for a short period.
Exactly. $60 for a dog that it's done. You don't got to do anything except for yearly, and he'll sleep on your lap. Once in a while, I'll give you a present on the floor, maybe, but you got to take the good with the bad.
And so I always get distracted when these dogs come in. I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
We should get a picture for the Facebook page so we can get with, adopt Tiramisu.
Yeah. Go ahead. Don't drink it.
Oh, man, you didn't bring your dog to water bowl. We're here. You got a kiss. Tiramisu.
Can I take one, too?
Yeah.
You remind me of the parascope.
Has anybody on the war?
Someone has to pour out a new water.
Ellis got a clean kiss.
Do you want some Mountain Dew, Glenn? Glenn bought it.
Too much caffeine.
Come on up, Glenn.
You have to follow it, Glenn, I'm sorry.
Chuck's coming up. Chuck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Move the mic toward you. There you go.
Chuck T. Catch, I have, oh, with the Maintenance Department. I have two items on the agenda this week, items number eight and number nine. They're both related to the Safety Center Visitation Room Alterations Project. The first one, item number eight, is the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute the construction agreement with GovTrust Partners LLC for the Geogu County Safety Center Visitation Room and Alteration Project in the amount of $130,098.
Just want to go into the second one, too.
The second one is the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board accept the performance and payment bond from GovTrust LLC for the Geogu County Safety Center Visitation Room Alteration Project and further release the bid bond.
So I, I mean, I voiced my concern about this guy before, so I, I'll just be interested to hear how the project goes. That's my only, my only comment on this, and so I'll make a motion to approve item number eight and nine.
Does this contractor have a drug-free workplace program?
He has submitted the paperwork with that, yes.
Okay.
And he signed a contract that has that clause in it.
Okay. I vote yes.
You have to second it first.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Okay.
Twice.
Aye, aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nick Corus, Water Resources. Item 10 on the agenda, requesting the Board approve and execute a contract agreement with Almond Oil for the bulk fuel purchase. We add a price of $0.10 more than the daily State of Ohio contract rate for the period of July 23rd, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. We only received one bid. They are our current supplier. They just couldn't keep it under any longer, so.
Okay. I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
And item 11 is requesting the Board release the bid bond submitted by Almond Oil Company for this project is no longer required to be held.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12. The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the AIA Document Standard Form of Agreement between Geogu County Board of Commissioners Owner and APG Office Furnishings Vendor Furniture, Furnishings and Equipment FF and E for the Furniture Contractor Geogu County Courthouse Expansion Project in the amount of $560,244.54.
And they were the only bidder, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then was this, this was part of the price initially when this was bid, or this is additional?
Do we know?
I don't know.
It's a separate contract.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't-
No, it's separate.
Okay, wasn't sure. All right, so I move to approve item number 12.
Second.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Okay, for item number 13, I've been working with Adrian Gordon from our office, as well as Jarrett Parker from NV5, the owner's rep for the Geogu County Courthouse Expansion Project. And today, we're going to present the Board collectively with an overview of the project. So if you give me one second, we'll change over here so the audience at home can hear us. So go ahead. Yes, it should be now. Let's double-check it. And you can plug in your HDMI.
Check the mic. Yep, see if it works.
Stop the mic.
Is that on?
Okay, is it showing up? Okay. Okay, we've got them all up? Okay, good.
Does it?
There's a switch on the bottom of it.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'll just speak from a distance.
It's locked in.
Okay.
We're good, I can. Good morning, my name's Jared Parker, I'm with NV5, project manager, owner's representative for the Georgia County Courthouse. We have the privilege today to provide a progress update for everyone on the courthouse. With me today is also Brett, he is their project manager with Infinity, who is the general contractor on the job site, so we'll kinda go through some of the photo progress that we have right now.
Thanks, Jared. So, just gonna run through a couple of progress photos of the product so far, so the first couple are the west elevation building, which most people can see from the outside, west side's mostly done, just working on the upper fiberglass cornice to finish things up. One thing I wanna, go back, one thing I wanted to point out that was kinda neat that I learned, so the stone was from the original quarry, from the original courthouse, but the letters that were engraved in the Georgia County Courthouse in the stone are actually done by hand. So, I originally thought that was done CNC milling, but they still do that work by hand, so that was kinda neat to learn. Who's next? So, starting on the left, picture of the magistrate's courtroom, so there's three magistrates courtrooms in the new addition, currently millwork is done, ceiling's almost done, next step's kinda flooring and just some finishing touches on that. Middle picture, common piece courtroom, just wrapping up the ceilings, next step there is the wood paneling that goes on the ceilings and on the walls, it is a sound absorbent paneling, so that'll be coming in the next month or so, and then on the right is the entrance from the elevator lobby to one of the floors, I believe that's the third floor. So you come off the elevator lobby, there's gonna be a TV there that's gonna direct, you know, where you need to go and events for that day. And then this last couple set of slides, we did do a mock-up room to show staff what the final, final finishes are going to look like, so that's on the third floor, and we're actually walking staff through there, I believe, next week to show all the flooring base, lights, the doors and so forth, just what they're gonna be working in there for the upcoming future.
This is on now? Okay. So I just wanna go through some of the schedule updates, our current substantial completion date is October 10th of this year, overall percentage complete with the project is roughly about 75%. FFNE install date, which is our furniture, is going to be timeframe between October 13th and November 7th, and then security FFNE, that's our metal detector, baggage scanner, rifle rack, those are slated for November 10th through the 21st. Courthouse relocation, so that's going to be everyone that's in the existing courthouse moving over to the new one, we're gonna have that slated for November 24th through December 16th of this year. And then some additional items to note, we'll be having owner training on the equipment to start immediately after the substantial completion date of October 10th, punchless work is gonna start immediately after substantial completion as well, and be completed by those items on November 7th, which is roughly 20 days, and then renovation between the old and the new courthouse portals is gonna take place December 17th through January 27th of next year. And then I'll hand it off to Adrian to give some budget updates as well.
Okay, so, all the information that I have is current as of Infinity's pay request number 22 and represents progress up to and including June 30th of 2025. The overall contract total with Infinity began at $19,686,776. We are up to 10 approved change orders totaling $483,529. I'll detail the approved change orders here in a moment, these change orders make up the total to $20,170,305. There are two additional change orders pending commissioner approval. The project as of June 30th was at 60%, so right now, obviously, we're at 75. The cost of the contract work completed to date is $13,382,690.94, with $8,116,505.94 remaining. We've paid $12,537,996, with a retainage value of $1,328,891.88. Contract contingency on this project started out at about a half a million, at $502,000, and is down to $283,800. We've used $218,200, or about 43.5% of the original amount, to cover 24 construction modifications. Most recently, there was $54,853 that was utilized for additional floor leveling on the second and third floors with other pending requests. The current cash balance in our Phase 2 Capital Reserve Fund is $10,593,056.73, covering $8,520,077.62 worth of purchase orders, as well as a pending furniture contract, which was just approved today, and any other future change orders. The current date marked for substantial completion, as was previously stated, is October 10th, 2025. So, to kinda go through the, the change orders, change order number one was for $9,562 and covered the deduction of, for reuse of courtroom AV components, and the addition of miscellaneous adjustments to wall sizes, deck heights, filling of unknown building openings, which I saw was very interesting to, I would've liked to have had Geraldo Rivera there to open that up and see what was, what was in the opening, you know? Pump and circuits, that was approved on July 23rd of 2024. Change order number two was for $210,346 for additional networking equipment and installation, also approved on 7/23/24. Change order number three was $72,853 for additional data drops, there were 34 dual and 37 single drops, also approved on 7/23/24. Change order number four was $36,448 for the addition of a cellular amplifier system, approved on October 1st of 2024. Change order number five was $7,701 for the fire alarm custom audio messaging system, approved on April 1st of 2025. Change order number six for $50,791 was for additional millwork, courtroom podiums, monitor brackets, intercom systems for interview rooms, TV drops and electrical revisions, exterior secure parking gate conduit, and wall revisions at the security desk, approved April 8th of 2025. Change order number seven was $54,194 for the addition of ordering and overseeing the installation of the baggage scanner, approved May 29th of 2025. Change order number eight for $18,110 was for the removal of speakers, network equipment and transaction windows, along with the addition of a clerk and finance counter and additional window shades, that was approved on May 29th of 2025. Change order number nine was for $48,400 for additional work required on the existing courthouse roof, which is approved also on May 29th of 2025. And finally, change order number 10 was for $11,344 for the additional audiovisual upgrades and deletion of a network switch. That concludes my portion of the presentation.
So that concludes our presentation for the Georgia County Courthouse Progress Update.
Thank you, and just a reminder, but in the parentheses on local, on number eight, it was a.
Reduction.
Yeah, parentheses is a deduction.
Right.
Yeah, it had some additions in there from the clerk and the finance counters, but with the removal of the speakers and some network equipment, it, the reduction was higher than the addition.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and unplug that, switch this back over. So are we anticipating any change orders beyond what is on the agenda today?
Sorry, I shouldn't shut that. Back on, okay. Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, the only other additional change order that we will be looking at is, we had a rough order magnitude currently slated for $30,000, which was the red light indicator and the microphone for the security cameras in the courtrooms, which we have been told is required by the county. Is there any other ones that I'm not remembering right now?
I have anything else right now?
I don't think so, so as of right now, we're just looking at 13, so 11 and 12 today, and then the red light indicator and microphones will be at a later date.
Okay.
Once we get pricing finalized, so right now that is in the subcontractor's hands to give us that accurate pricing.
Okay, what's the ballpark for that additional change order?
So that one is, is around $30,000.
Okay. Can you talk about the ones that are on the agenda today? The change orders?
Uh, yes, so change order 11, I believe that one is the added cameras and card readers for $137,000. So those, those were some that the Sheriff's Department had gone through some of the drawings and wanted some additions in there, just for increased security measures throughout the courthouse. We had a sit-down meeting with them, and went through the drawings a couple months back, and it was deemed necessary that some additions were needed for security purposes throughout the courthouse. So from that meeting, we were able to provide some updated drawings, the updated drawings then went to the subcontractor to give us the, the more accurate pricing, which was the $137,000.
Okay, why, so why was that not originally anticipated? Were, I mean, was the sheriff not involved in those initial discussions with the design?
I don't, I don't rightly know that answer, I was not on the project at that time, I don't know if they were a part of the design coordination whenever it was implemented into the drawings.
Okay, Sheriff, can you, can you answer that?
Do I have to call the microphone?
Please, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. Get your steps in.
That's 12. Yep. That'll work too, Sheriff, if you wanna have a seat.
Yeah, you can sit down. Have a seat.
Scott Hildenbrandt from the Sheriff's Office. No, we weren't, I think the, the initial design phase where the people that designed it thought that that was sufficient, and then at, at the point where we had the opportunity to look at it, there were some blind spots, there were some doors that needed to open only one way for the security should a inmate or the judges need to vacate the courtroom, for instance, some additional stuff for the, at the gate when they were coming in, the judge into the secure parking, so to answer your question, no, we weren't involved initially, they put it together, they felt that that's what was needed, and we felt that there was more needed.
Okay.
To ensure the security of everybody that works there and anybody that visits there.
Okay, and, I mean, and you feel that, cause like, this is a substantial change order, so you feel, you know, everything in this change order is, is essential for the security of GI County residents?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the whole point of it, was to make sure that, because how many times have you seen where the camera didn't cover, and, and unfortunately, if somebody's gonna do something nefarious, they're gonna figure out where the cameras aren't seeing, and that's when they're gonna do it. So, we tried to cover all those bases, make sure, I mean, this addition is going to be 500% better security than what they have today, and, and we wanna make sure that we're doing it initially, because when you go to add that stuff later, you know, it's gonna cost even more.
Yes.
So yes, we feel comfortable with that, we think that this is gonna be good for everybody, and certainly endorse that change.
Yeah, I mean, I know you guys, your department is always kind of notoriously frugal in a lot of ways, so I, I, but I, you know, it's also a large change order, so I just kinda wanna make sure that you feel confident that, that we're doing the best thing with taxpayer resources.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think we have all bases covered at this point, and, and should this go through, then everybody will be in good shape.
Okay, appreciate it, Sheriff.
Well, the meeting that we had at the job trailer, it was like three months ago or longer, I was there with the IT people, and you were there as well, and that was the first initial, they explained to us what they thought we needed, and I know you worked diligently to say, this is what we need, this is what we don't need, and go from there, so it was, it was a good meeting, I think it was an hour or longer.
Yeah, and what they did was they sent us the, the prints and everything that they initially thought that they needed, and then we had an opportunity to look at that, our IT people looked at it, the, the security people looked at it, and then we had that meeting up at the trailer and made our suggestions on where we wanted cameras, so we wanted different type cameras, looked different ways, and added some, added some, some card readers for some of the doors, that would just make that flow a lot easier and safer, and that's where we came up with that, and then they came up with the price, so.
Okay, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Sheriff.
And then Jared, could you talk about the second change order, the change order 12, what, what that is requesting?
Yeah, so what that is, is that's added fiber backbone cabling from the technology rooms essentially, so there is a redundant loop from floor to floor, it's just not a direct, just not one single feed communicating from floor to floor.
Yeah, yeah.
If something happens with the second floor, first can't talk to the third because the second has broken it, so this creates a redundant loop where it can continuously talk and communicate with one another. And then the last item I, up there, is a fiber backbone cabling from the current annex building to the courthouse, this is upgrading the current cabling that's running through there right now.
Oh, so is that all part of trade and order number 12?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess same question, and perhaps you'll give me the same answer, but why was this not originally anticipated?
It was communicated, gosh, was that six months ago?
Cause I sort, yeah, I sort of remember this from an ADP meeting, where there was this discussion.
Yeah, it was a long time ago that we had discussed it, and it was deemed unnecessary, but then it has come up again as being an item that was necessary. This was something, I believe, that was it ADP that said, hey, we, we do need this, and I don't know if there was further internal discussions with ADP, but they did come back to us and say, hey, we do need to do this.
So when you say it was deemed unnecessary, who, who deemed it unnecessary?
I don't recall who that was, cause it was, I wanna say it was at one point brought up in, was it not brought up during a session at some point, and then it was, it was scrapped during that time saying, hey, let's dig more into this, and, and then we perhaps talked about it at the ADP board meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I remember discussing it at ADP, I don't know if we discussed it in session or not, I don't recall, but that, that doesn't mean we did.
I think it was previous.
Okay.
It was a while ago.
Okay, okay, understood. Yeah, and I mean, I'm not, and I, I just asked, so, I mean, we have other construction projects that are gonna be coming, and I'm, you know, just how can we do better in the future, anticipating these needs rather than, you know, increasing the price of the cost on the back end. So as far as, you know, substantial completion date, like what, what could happen, like worst-case scenario to, so that we are not at substantial completion by that date?
Directly affecting Infinity, nothing that I can see right now, the only, only concern, one of the concerns that I have right now in terms of the schedule is the furniture contractor that we just contracted with APG.
Okay.
So, getting their submittals in, getting them approved by TDA, the architect.
Yeah.
Getting the material ordered, getting it fabricated, getting it delivered to the site and installed, that's gonna be a challenge right now, just being that we're a little bit later in the game of getting a furniture contractor contracted. So I am currently working with APG on finiting their schedule as much as possible, trying to get it closer to the December 1st date that we initially had on the, on the public bid notice that we had sent out.
Okay, so the furniture is not manufactured at this point, is that what I'm hearing? It needs to be manufactured and then brought on-site and then assembled?
It'll need to be, it'll need to be, yeah, essentially manufactured to the size and conditions that is required by the drawings.
Okay.
Materials can be there, but they have to be cut down to size, they have to be constructed properly to fit within the building.
Okay, so, so the furniture is customized for the building, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think everything else, you have anything, Mr. DeBork?
No, it's just, like this building, there's only so many places that you can put a U-shaped office and a place for your computer and, and filing cabinets and things like that.
office and a place for your computer and filing cabinets and things like that. So it is what it is.
Yeah. And we've got a meeting next week with the relocation company, with Randy Taylor over at the courthouse, to discuss moving from the old courthouse to the new. So just trying to get ahead of that as much as possible to, I guess, address those obstacles that will come whenever we're moving, you know, like Judge Paskey's desk, for instance. You know, we're going to be relocating that. That's going to be an obstacle, but we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
And the guys that did, that are coming next week for the furniture relocation are the ones who relocated a board of elections as well.
Okay.
And did the move also for this building from the other original location. They're the ones that's going to be coming, and they've always just been spot on. They've always found ways around those kind of obstacles that we see that might be coming.
All right. So no obstacles in the way of substantial completion by October? That's what I heard.
As far as from the construction side, no.
Okay. All right.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Adrian. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number 14. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute change order number 11, increasing the contract with Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Joga County Courthouse Expansion Project, GMP Phase 1 and Phase 2, for additional cameras and card readers in the amount of $137,582.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Aye.
Item number 15. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute change order number 12, increasing the contract with Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Joga County Courthouse Expansion Project, GMP Phase 1 and Phase 2, for additional technology backbone cabling in the amount of $17,817.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Yes.
Item number 16. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-166 in honor of Paul Harris dedication into Legends Park at the Great Joga County Fair.
Should we read the resolution or into the record, or if you want to?
Sure.
Have it.
Resolution in honor of Paul Harris and his induction into Legends Park at the Joga County Fairgrounds. Whereas Legends Park is a memorial park located between the antique and agricultural buildings on the Joga County Fairgrounds, as is dedicated to the community members who have made extraordinary contributions to the Great Joga County Fair and have been inducted into the Ohio Fair Managers Association Hall of Fame. Whereas Paul Harris was born and raised on the Howard Family Farm in Bainbridge Township, where he developed at a very young age a passion for dairy farming and later his love for the fair, both of which helped shape and grow our Great Joga County Fair. Whereas Paul Harris worked tirelessly to build the amazing fair we have today, always striving to improve it year after year. His efforts extended beyond operations to shaping the future leaders of tomorrow, as demonstrated in 2020, when despite a pandemic and against all odds, he ensured a fair was held, event if modified, to the junior fair. So 4H could showcase the hard work they invested all year. Whereas Paul Harris dedicated many years of service to the fair, with over 31 years as a fair board director, 15 years as fair secretary, and as president of the Ohio Fair Managers Association, representing Joga County at the state level. Whereas Paul Harris alongside his wife Pam Kratzner exemplified a legacy of service, honoring tradition, and working with devotion to make the Great Joga County Fair not only Ohio's oldest, but also the best fair in the state. That legacy can be seen across the fairgrounds today. Now therefore be it resolved that the Joga County Board of Commissioners hereby honors Paul Harris and his induction into Legends Park at the Joga County Fairgrounds, where his enduring passion for the fair will live on through the legacy he leaves behind. Be it further resolved that this resolution becomes part of the permanent record of the Board of Commissioners of Joga County, Ohio.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Yes.
And that ceremony will take place on Thursday morning, the 28th, at 9:30.
Yes.
Right before session, right?
At 9:30. And they, I was at the fairgrounds the other day, and the stone people were there. They got, they brought in from the Howard Family Farm, a stone, a mammoth stone, and they cut into it and put a brass plaque in it and a picture of Paul and his wife. So I was there, I witnessed them, and I knew the guys that were installing that, so I had a good chat. But it's, just to put it all together, again, if anybody can make it at 9:30 on the first day of the fair for this dedication of the stone and Paul Harris with all his work historically with his family at the fair. So just wanted to throw that in.
And Christie, I know last year, folks that wanted to attend to the commissioners' meeting at the fair, they could get into the fair for free, right? Are we able to do that again?
I briefly mentioned that to Meg on how we wanted to handle that.
Okay.
Typically in the past, they would have, they did like free admission up until like noon on that day. I do not believe that that is slated for this year. So if anybody that is attending specifically to the commissioners' meeting, I know in the past, they've done time passes where you can let them know at the gate that you're attending the meeting, and they'll give you a time pass so that you can attend. And then you just have to either pay your admission to stay for the rest of the day and be out by a certain time.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. Item 17. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment and compensation of public employees pursuant to ORC 121.22G1.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Yes.
And Nick will be joining us.
Okay. Okay.
I have you returning at 11:14 a.m. No action.
Okay. And you have the timeframe when we come back?
Yeah, 11:14.
Now we'll move to item number 18. Discussion of, do you have something else?
Yes, we do. Commissioner, we have the county engineer here, if you'd like to come up, to discuss State Route 608 and Chardon-Windsor Road intersection and some upcoming safety changes.
Good morning.
Still morning.
It is? It is? Good morning. I have Brian Blaney, ODOT District 12, Long Range Planning Director, I think is the appropriate title.
Long Range Traffic Planning Engineer, Brian Blaney with ODOT District 12.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
I've talked to you before at the Amish Safety Day. Nice.
Yeah. So we're here to have a discussion about the 608-Chardon-Windsor intersection, which has been on our city radar for quite some time. I know it's a tragedy anytime that there's a loss of life or injuries on our highways, and would like to pass a consultancy as to friends and family that have been affected by it. My friends and family go through that intersection daily as well, as many, well, as many other intersections in the county. And our goal is safety number one, to get that statement out there. As part of, being the new engineer, I guess, look at a lot of things in a lot of different ways, and some of the things I'm intending on working on more than we already do is a partnering effort and forward motion on. With ODOT, we work together with them. I used to work with Brian, and we know each other for years, as well as many other constituents over there at ODOT. And some are new, and I have to learn again. But townships, we've had, with this intersection specifically, there was a meeting, I believe it was May, early May, ODOT attended, Chardon Fire, ourselves, I think it was Claret Township, they couldn't make it due to scheduling circumstances. We sat down and talked about what did happen, what has happened, and where we're going in the future. Part of this is, you know, we recognize that it is an issue. And there's many other intersections that have been issues that have been addressed in different ways, whether it's signals, signs, advanced warning, or even just public outreach of awareness. Unfortunately, part of what we do is numbers and math. That's not the unfortunate part, that's the job. It's, you can't really put numbers and math on human nature and the fact that we make mistakes.
Yeah.
You can never eliminate. You can always minimize. And that's the ultimate goal, is to try to minimize this through outreach, interaction, and study. Brian could probably go into the more technical aspects of what's, where we're at, where we're going in the near future here. Part of that, I'll preference to as well is, yes, Chardon Windsor, County Highway 13, is statutory authority of the engineer's office, county road, and 608 is the authority of ODOT. Being that they are in the same sandbox, doesn't mean we don't talk about the interactions that go in between each other. We have the ability to do things Monday. I believe we started today, Bainbridge Road is closed at Route 606, 4H signalized intersection relocation project because of safety. Everybody knows it's a unique intersection from, it's been that way since, I think, we have records from the '30s or even more. But doesn't mean we can't move forward with the
Yeah, absolutely.
... modern technology. Brian, if you want to jump in on?
I mean, could you gentlemen just talk about that intersection? Like, why do you believe it's so dangerous? Like, what are we seeing as far as like driver error that's causing these accidents?
From the accident report, the latest accident report is not out yet, and we don't have that. I've only had hearsay, because we've met with the highway patrol post commander, and my understanding is the vehicle did stop at the stop sign.
Yeah.
Then proceeded out. Now how that happens and why that happens, we don't know. I believe that, I was told there was a witness to that fact, that the vehicle did stop.
That's what I read on the news, too. Yeah.
Until that report's out, it's just hearsay.
Yeah.
I won't speculate much more than that. I can't say it was distracted. One of the reports in the past, there was cannabis involved.
Yeah.
So there's many of the human nature elements that are, too many variables to make a calculation.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes your brain just blips when you're driving, too. I'm sure we've all had those moments where...
There could be many, many things involved. But as for the geometry of it, it is a, there is a stop condition there, and it's, if you're driving it, you can tell, they're not going through it. They are stopping. But it's the, I don't know if there's a, just a non-recognition of the speed that's at play.
Right, right, right.
These are all speculations.
Yeah.
There is sight distance, I believe, where, that's not, sometimes that's an issue, trees overhanging or too tight.
Okay. I was going to say, what does sight distance mean? The amount of distance you can see clearly the vehicles that are oncoming?
When you're stopped at the stop sign and you do your visual scan for oncoming, there's no tree blocking.
Okay.
So you have to creep out or things of that nature.
Right, right.
And there can be signs in the way, sometimes they're temporary signs. Sometimes it just could be a tree that's drooped or grown out. Those things that are looked for.
Okay. But that intersection, that's not an issue?
It's basically a wide-open field right there.
Right, right.
And when you're, to the north, I believe there's a tree row that has been maintained, I believe by ODOT, that comes through there and maintains on 608 itself.
Okay.
But, yeah, there's no...
From that intersection south, it's clear, wide open.
It's clear north. If you're approaching westbound in that intersection, it's two farm fields.
Yeah. And what happened in the prior fatality that occurred there? What was the issue?
My understanding is the car pulled out in front of the truck, again, was stopped.
Okay. So both of these incidents, that car was initially stopped
That's...
and then failed to yield to oncoming traffic
That's my understanding.
Properly. Okay.
It's not that, they don't see it coming. And I know rumble strips were brought up in our meetings.
Yeah, right.
What rumble strips typically do is they're an awareness
Yeah. There is at a stop sign, but they're already stopped.
Right. Of a condition.
Yeah.
And the condition in this case is the stop, but they're heating the stop. They see the stop.
Yeah. Right, right.
So it, I'll put in there, too, the other conversations that were brought up in the meeting. We've had rumble strips on roads that the public has to be removed because it's a 24-hour-a-day noise issue.
Yeah.
And it didn't really add to safety
I understand.
in that case. So I know that was discussed, and I'll just bring that out.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a point that was made. And in this case, the condition is being met. It's the decision point is...
Right. Do you have anything to add to that, Brian?
You know, I'd like to add that we had looked at the state screens, the rural highway, state highway network for higher crash locations, and, you know, this intersection was on our radar screen. And we had made some, you know, typically when we have an intersection that has a crash history that's out of the ordinary, we do a study on it, and we consider a range of alternatives to try to, you know, obviously reduce the crash problem. And I think that we had done some work there to install signing on 608 to try to increase awareness of the crossroad with Chardon-Windsor.
Right.
I think before that, we did LED-enhanced stop signs on both approaches of Chardon-Windsor. But it's a progressive approach up to, you know, hopefully, we try to do that to address crash pattern. And when that fails, you know, we look at more like the next, the next countermeasure in line that become progressively more restrictive in terms of traffic control and traffic operation.
Right, right.
And the next, you know, the next one in line would be to convert it to always stop control. And that's a decision that we don't take lightly. And, you know, after our meeting in May that Andy talked about, that was, you know, we discussed at the meeting that that was probably the next thing that we're going to need to consider, and we just want to make sure that we've done all our diligence, homework, whatever you want to call it, to be able to support the change in traffic control to an always stop. And there, you know, I will say that ODOT's, like, there's always a risk that somebody will, who's familiar with the intersection, will forget that
Yes.
like even, like, no matter how many stop signs you put and put lights on them and all that, that there's always that risk that, of somebody blowing it, and then, you know, we worry about that, too. So when we do, last week, someone from our office contacted Andy and let him know that we had reached a decision of, you know, from the May crash, that that's the direction that we're going to move forward with. And I think that, you know, I saw that the six to eight weeks is what got out in the press release from Chardon Fire. You know, obviously, since there was a crash this weekend, we're going to accelerate that and prioritize it internally to
Okay, great.
do it as quickly as we can, just acknowledging
Yeah.
the concern of GIA County residents.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate that.
So at the end result, the intersection will be just like 528 and Route 6, a four-way stop?
A four-way stop, yes.
Okay. And how long did it take that intersection to get a four-way stop? Because I can't remember if there was any fatalities at that intersection.
At 528?
528 and 6.
In Thompson.
In Thompson.
Maybe he's thinking...
Isn't that a traffic signal?
Maybe he's thinking 166.
166.
166.
166 and 528.
166 and 528.
They're all right there, so...
That's a good question.
And then do you do a study after that, it becomes a four-way stop? How many accidents and fatalities after you've done the corrections?
Commissioner, I can tell you, we've done three that I can think of in recent memory. I'm going to try to do them from memory. 86 and 166, 528, 166, and 528 and...
166.
166.
Right.
And I believe we had, like, good luck at all three of those, that, you know, hopefully they were well-planned and well-implemented, that we didn't have any crashes, like, in the six to 12 months after the conversion. But I can't say off the top of my head how long, I mean, there's a difference, too, between doing it, like, doing it, like, working it into everybody, the typical workload, and making a priority where, like, this is everybody's top priority to order the signs, lay them out, get them installed, and get it working.
So what are you thinking for a timeline if it's less than six to eight?
You know, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
I know our Public Information Office quoted three to four weeks.
Okay.
So I'm pretty sure we can beat that.
Okay.
So I guess that's what our goal is.
Good to hear.
But I'm happy to, you know, with the measures that you're going to be taking, it's going to be saving lives and it'll be safer for everybody going through there.
Yeah, we hope.
So that'd be great. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
With the installation of four-way stop signs at that intersection, will that reduce the speed on 608 and the one direction on Chardon Windsor? As you approach that intersection, will it reduce the speed that's there because of the four-way stop? Because I know right now there are all different speed limits that come to that intersection currently.
So just to clarify, you're talking about the speed limit or the operating speeds the drivers travel?
The actual speed limits that are there.
So you're talking the regulatory black-on-white?
Correct.
So, no, we don't plan to change the posted speed limits at this time. I mean, we feel like the speed limit on 608 is probably appropriate for the roadway characteristics between, you know, in that stretch of road that, you know, is predominantly rural, large lot, farm, that people just want to, like, feel comfortable driving that speed. And on the state highway system, for sure, we try to keep the speed limits as high as possible in order to make it easier and quicker for people, trucks, to get from point A to point B. Now, I think that...
I just was asking because you're going to go from a 55 down to a stop sign on 608, and you're going to go from 50 to a stop sign that's there, and 45 to a stop sign that's already there, and you're going to reduce 55 on 608 down to a stop sign at an intersection that's not used to being there. That's the reason why I ask.
Sure. No, I mean, we do that at other intersections, too.
Have gradual declining in speed before you get to the stop sign?
Well, typically, we would do an advisory plaque ahead of the stop sign. The sight lines along 608 are really pretty good. So visibility to see the stop sign, I mean, especially on the initial installation, we plan to have dual stop signs and advance warning signs to draw people's attention to it.
Flags, there's lots of...
There's, yes.
Part of the introduction of the new.
Yeah.
You've probably seen them before, you don't see them that often, but you'll see, like, road flags by the standard drawing is to grab the attention of those that are approaching that may be used to it and just, oh, wait, something's different.
Yeah, you have to, you have to retrain the public that's normally using those streets.
Yep. It's an important part of change is awareness.
Yeah.
And when it comes to a stop condition that wasn't there before, that's important to do it right.
Well, thanks for coming in, gentlemen, and explaining that process to us.
Thanks for everything you do.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate you making this a priority.
Anything else, Amy?
No.
That's it. All right. I'm going to reprint this. I found two mistakes in Paul's resolution that I would like to fix and then have you revise.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I wondered when you were reading it, there was a couple times you stumbled on it. I was like, I wonder if there's a typo there?
Yeah, there's a couple spacing issues and one word that...
Okay. Sometimes that happens with the red lines.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's the last meeting before the fair, and one of the things that we've been working on is myself and Gina from Economic Development, and Amy, Merchant Hall 2, that building was used during the 200th anniversary of the Great Jog County Fair. We're changing it into Jog County Services. And there's going to be, Commissioner's going to have a table there, Destination Jog, America 250, which there's 60 people on that committee, and Prosecutor, Job and Family Services, Jog County Auditor's Office, Department of Archives and Records. There's 16 total that are going to be setting up a table there. Everything that we, that we can do to serve the residents of Jog County, come to Merchant 2 Building during the fair. The Recorder's going to be there, Family First Council, Century Village Museum and Historic Center, Jog County Mental Health and Recovery Services, Clerk of Courts, the Sheriff's Office. And the Sheriff's Office is going to have the Lost Team Table, a DARE table. We're going to even have the Camaro that was confiscated years ago, as it's all decked out with the DARE program. So Jog County GIS, and we're going to have a table from all Rotarians, have a table there, and the County Engineers' Office is going to be there. So it's something that is experimental. We're going to do it this year and next year, ramping up to America 250 Jog to get ready for that. So, and we'll see how it works these next two years. And a lot of fairs have a building or a tent for elected officials, so people can come in there and ask a question about this or that. So I just wanted to get that out there. And thank you, Gina, for all your hard work organizing this and getting everything set, ready, set for the, for the fair. So that's all I have. We'll go into public comment now. Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Paul, in favor.
Aye.